I'd like to call this meeting into order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. If you have a cell phone, we'd appreciate you putting it on silent or turning it off. At this time, we will stand for the implication in pledge, Mr. Commander.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as citizens of Walton County so that we may do the things that we feel are in the best interest of all the citizens of Walton County. We pray for those, as 9/11 approaches, we pray for those families and that you will keep them close to your heart and that they may be comforted. We thank you, Lord, for the people that serve us every day, our men and women that serve the county and Public Works and Finance and the various departments that help us serve all the people of Walton County. We pray that you will bring peace to the world and guide our leaders in Washington to do what is right. And all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the additions, we have a request from Sandeston Owners Association to withdraw their development application request. So we'd like to add that in the 4D under administration. We had a meeting with representatives from the city of Freeport regarding the fire department, and we have a recommendation for that as well that we'd like to make in the 4E. And based on the earlier meeting, in 4F, we would like to present, ask you to consider approving staff to draft a resolution supporting the state, making funds available for the initial cost of consulting services for Restore Act projects for Commissioner and Commander to take and present to the consortium meeting next week. So those are the changes that we have.
Motion to approve the changes?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Or is it the agenda first?
Agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your turn.
Next time, approve the agenda.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bruce Smith with the Florida Forestry Services here. Bruce is good about coming every year to give us their annual report, and he's here. And you've got the document in your package. And Bruce, if you would come, share with us.
Thank y'all for having us. All is well in the Florida Forest Service. We're getting plenty of rain, and our drought index number goes from zero to eight hundred, and I think we're at three thirty-three, so we're doing good there. At one time, we were looking at doing all the rain, getting rid of all our crawler tractors and helping our budget out by selling them or whatever, but figured we better keep them. It's gonna get dry again one day. Florida Forest Service is still doing mitigation work. We have mitigation teams at Bonifay that works the region, and they're still doing mowing and mitigating around urban areas and taking care of business there so that we can prevent anything from happening down the road. Currently, we have several folks, men and women out in the western states, helping with wildfire in California, Idaho, Montana, and things are kind of slowing down out there. So hopefully, we'll get our resources back and save the Florida. And if needed for hurricane or what have you, we'll be ready. And we're geared up for hurricanes also. We do the ice ward and MREs and chainsaw crews to help out the counties or whatever. But anyhow, we're here for you if you need us. Any questions for me?
We certainly appreciate the job you're doing, too. Appreciate it.
And he always comes with a smile.
Yes, he does.
That's refreshing.
All right.
I heard actually you were building an R, but you put that, you stopped that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next on the agenda is Mr. Beard from Healthmark, the chief operating officer with a request for the board to support a resolution supporting the hospital in some of their efforts with the Florida Department of Crime Protection regarding the four-laning of 331. Jerry, if you would. And the ground envelope that just passed has some documentation here. I'd like you to review.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and staff, I am Jerry Beard, Chief Operating Officer of Healthmark. This is John Oard and Matt Douglas, who work with us at the hospital, here this afternoon to request the commission to support Healthmark in its request to have FDOT review the plans that they currently have for widening of Highway 331. We're in no way are trying to slow down or be opposed to the four-laning of 331. It's desperately needed. What we are requesting is a resolution from the commission to support the hospital. The, all four lanes of 331's proposed plans show that it's coming on the east side of the current highway, taking up right at three hundred feet of the property. The hospital has plans for expansion of office buildings in the future. We're concerned over the noise, dust pollution that will be associated with the construction. We have emergency room, intensive care, and OR located on the west end of the hospital. They would be very close to this. Utilities that the city has run to the hospital, water, gas, sewage, is all on the east side on that property. It would have to be relocated at the state's expense, is my understanding, prior to them being able to put the road on the east side currently. So, under the proposed plan, it's coming to the east side here of the hospital. We're just asking, there's about eight tenths of a mile there that they consider possibly relocating. I will answer any questions.
Any questions?
I personally think it's paramount as we do widen 331, and that quarter is going to be filled with, in our vision, many businesses and business opportunities and industry as well, that we keep that hospital intact because I see that that hospital will do nothing but grow as that quarter grows. It's such a little deviation for DOT and perhaps, I don't understand why they didn't get with the hospital to find out their plans, but I certainly support your efforts on moving it just slightly enough to give, to keep the hospital intact. Because I'm not for sure, but where does, does a helicopter land out there?
The helicopter does land.
It lands there as well.
Yeah, and it will, with the expansion that they have proposed.
It'll take the helipad away, which is viable.
They can't just change one little section, though. They don't, they have to back up and, you know, I mean, they can't just change one section. They'd have to start at some point to make them.
I think that's what you said, wasn't it? Yes.
To line?
That's what he said. You can't just.
Yeah, you can't just change one section. What is that right across the street from y'all that, it's like a long building? Is that some kind of a?
Chicken house.
Chicken, okay, okay. Yeah, I guess.
They're not used anymore, are they, Mr. Beard?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I used to clean those chickens.
Any other questions?
I made.
Commissioner, just for clarity, there was a draft resolution in your packet that we, there was a couple of things there that we were a little unsure of, so we cleaned it up a little bit and just gave a very short resolution that says we fully support the hospital, we fully support 331, and we support the DOT working with the hospital.
All right, I guess I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Now the motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I want to say, where's he hiding? Matt Douglas. It's good to see his face back in the commission meeting.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, from Public Works, we have a request for permission for the clerk to collect on the Windsor Estates letter of credit and the amount of $22,672 if an extension for the final inspection memo has not been received by the expiration date, which is September 21. It's my understanding they just, there's some areas of, there's about thirteen lots where they do not have the sidewalk in, so they can certainly come in before the 21st and take care of that extension. Or, you know, if they get substantially completed, we'll refund their money when they demonstrate completion.
We still do not have any clear, I mean, when you were on the commission, we have been roundabout this, about, you know, doing this kind of thing, and then are, are we not responsible? Sydney probably doesn't know, but if we could find out tomorrow when that's going to be available, that will make decisions like this so much easier.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, I can't tell you, Mr. Davis, I've had that discussion, and.
Okay, he's waking on it, right?
We need to address it.
What's board wishes?
Motion to have the clerk collect on the Windsor Lake letter of credit. If not received, if not received by September 21st.
Second. Have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No. One note, just on principle.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to ask Buddy Wright to present their findings on the pumping. And while he's here, ask him to give us an update on the situation at 38 Big Redfish Lake.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start with the update on Big Redfish. We were out there earlier. We did get the slip liners delivered. One of them's in. They'll be putting the other one in tomorrow during the grouting.
Can you explain that process just a little?
Yes, sir. The slip liners go inside the damaged culverts, and then they'll be grouted around to fill the, you know, the expansion of any joints and all. And at that point, once the grouting's done, then we'll prepare the base and start putting the asphalt down. We should have all this done and the road back open Friday, so.
Right, Mr. Wright?
Yes, ma'am.
Had the divers gone in the culverts?
Actually, the water was down enough, we did not have to get the divers in there. We were able to send some of our guys in, so it worked out good.
Good.
When you work against the beavers and take their handiwork down, it's amazing what happens to the water.
Right.
So.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we got, we get a lot of calls on that. This is just temporary, right, so that until we get the permits and everything. And also, just as another comment, I got a call from Congressman Miller's chief of staff, and they're gonna try to help us expedite the Army Corps permit.
Good. Commissioner, to that end, this fix is, it can be semi-permanent. I mean, if we, if we see it's gonna take a long time to get those permits, then if the board decides we can wait till this time next year before we shut down and start constructing bridges, so we don't do it in season.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's.
They'll last as long as we need them to last.
Yeah. And that's something, Louis, you can kind of get out to the public is that, you know, because they're gonna be, you know, they have these expectations, and we need to maybe kind of be putting out bulletins about the right thing.
Buddy, one thing I'd kind of like to keep in mind, too, we initially thought this thing was gonna be closed for months as we proceeded through to replace it with a bridge.
Right.
If we go that route, a future date based upon permitting, et cetera, then we're looking at a significant time that that road's gonna be shut out unless there's some type of bypass bridge factored in to keep it open east and west while the construction's going on. So otherwise, we're gonna hear, we, the board, and others are gonna hear from business owners down there that they cannot allow it or don't want it to be closed as long as it would be closed. So we need to probably look at it, too, as aside from doing the bridge as a replacement, another mechanism to bypass the construction zone and keep it available east and westbound.
Yes, sir. We would certainly do that. Any other questions on that topic?
All right. We'll move on to the last meeting, maybe the meeting before. Public Works was asked to get some information. We had a lot of flooding, a lot of need for pumps. We really, you know, didn't have any available. Regional utilities did step up and help us a lot. We greatly appreciate that. But we went out and gathered some information as far as to bring back to the board on what it would take to be able to tackle the issues that we've seen in the last couple of months. So we looked at it as from a, you know, what would it cost to purchase, what would it cost to lease and man them. So the first option was purchasing, and for a six-inch pump, we can pull behind the trucks. You're looking at it in the neighborhood of $45,000 a piece. And we wanted to get up, set up to where we could at least have three available from what we've seen during the flooding. So you're looking at, in the neighborhood of $135,000 to have them in place. Now, you know, there's some drawbacks with that. You know, we purchased them, they sit around, we may not need them. So we went out and looked at what's our possibility of leasing. We got a price from Crowder Gulf as far as to provide them for us, them come and man them. And this price is based on operating these pumps 24/7 for one week. So Crowder had come back with a price of just a few dollars short of $15,000. And like I said, that's three six-inch pumps, the associated hoses, and them manning it for a week, nonstop. We also checked into, what if we just go out and lease them ourselves? We let our guys man them, we get the associated, everything we need with them. For us to operate them a week, we're looking in the neighborhood of about $6,200. So that, unless the board directs us different, that's the avenue we want to pursue, just being able to talk with Thompson Pump in Panama City, see if we can work something out where we can get them when we need them. And we want to come up with a procedure, SOP, on how we address this situation in the future, and we'll certainly be coming back to the board with that. But that's the information we've got and brought back, so certainly entertaining questions.
Buddy, just for historical, when was the last time we needed pumps?
We really don't.
No.
We.
Other than this event, sir. Other, when was the last time we actually needed pumps, you know?
I can't really recall. I mean, I don't know that we've ever seen them, to the extent we needed them over the last couple of months.
Did we use them in I-?
Did we use them during the hurricanes at all?
I don't.
That was before my?
Oil spill.
Okay. Oil spill. That was before my time at Public Works. I'm not sure.
Somebody back there knows something.
Yeah, I was here for local.
Sorry, you. Sorry, you need to come to the front.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We need your name, sir, so that we can, so it's been six years.
I'm Alan Legay. I'm a homeowner in Gulf Pines. Last year, we needed them, couldn't get them. This year, we needed them, couldn't get them. We ran them. We took care of the problem. We, we pumped out Overlook, we pumped out Beach Drive, and we pumped out Lakeview for the county. These are all public roads. The neighbors did that. So, last year, we needed them, and we were told that, as Buddy says, they didn't have them. And we did it last year. I think what you're gonna find is, as the rains continue, even though we're not dealing with that right now, July and August are gonna be the months that this community is gonna have to deal with either torrential rains, hurricanes, tropical systems, what have you. And it could become, with what they're saying, with regards to global warming, the rise of sea level. I'm still dealing with the leaching issue on one of my properties where the right-of-way is still showing floodwater, and it's leaching out of the properties around my property. 191 Overlook took a substantial hit, and, I mean, we're talking seventeen inches of rain in the road. That's been documented. It's been sent to the emergency management people in the state. I'm meeting with DEP on the 25th to coordinate with them, try to work a solution that will hopefully mitigate our problem anyway, because we have to deal with it individually. And up until, well, today, we're still not getting any help from anybody. We do it on our own. And, I mean, I'd like to see it changed. And, you know, obviously, 38 is a very important corridor, but I think when you have a problem with, with any road, you need to, you know, I think the county, if they're gonna do, because I'm not gonna be around forever, and we pump. We've become known as the pump masters.
I think a lot, a lot of. What I understand, a lot of condominiums, a lot of places rented pumps and pump their own, because, yeah, the county just, we didn't have the capacity to do it.
Right, you had no pumps. So I think it's, you need to listen to Buddy and at least help the people. I mean, not to say that we're not capable of taking care of it ourself, but then again, it's like, is it my responsibility to take care of a county road? I don't think it is.
And which, and who, you know? Question is, because we got a lot of, lot of places that we're.
Right.
And the question is, where do you go first? You know, how, you know, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not, right. And I'm not pressing the issue because I understand, I know how to take care of it.
Yeah.
And we've done it in the past, but, you know, we, we're dealing with DEP, and there's so many things that you have to accommodate for. We're dealing, we're accommodating the turtle people, we're accommodating the economic issues. We're right next door to Sandeston, and when we start pumping, DEP starts getting complaints from the vacationers. They don't understand why the color of the water is the way it is, and then we get feedback from them. And then if a turtle dies because of the water or whatever reason, I get a call from DEP wanting to know what the heck is going on, and all I'm trying to do is save my neighbors and their property.
I think we need to, I think we need to get some standard operating procedures, because.
I think one of the problems is, is we do have some of the roads, because I've talked with them extensively, but they, they do have a permit to pump to the Gulf, but that's their problem.
We have to get that every time. We have to get that every time, and if you're not on top of it.
Yeah, they can't pump to Sandeston, well, they could, but Sandeston won't let them.
The question is, we're in a lot of places, we have to pump the water today.
Well, with our neighborhood, we have a grandfathered pipe, and that's what gives us the ability to get a quick approval. And that's why I'm meeting with the DP on the 25th. Mark, or excuse me, Jim Martinello is coming into town, and you all may be involved. I've been given the date, the time.
Yes.
But not the place. So it's like, okay.
It's on the Gulf, so it'd be in your district. Anything on the waters side yours, yeah.
But I would, I would like to see a more proactive response from the county. This is gonna happen more often. And we had Ivan. The 25th. Uh-huh. At 1:00 PM was the last I talked to him about, but there's still not a location. I think he's trying to determine who he's gonna get to come to the meeting, and then he's gonna figure out where he's gonna have it.
Okay, thank you.
Buddy.
But.
I'm sorry. Is there any way, when you start talking to Thompson or Crowder Gulf, that it can be contractually agreed to, that we have first come, first served?
We will certainly talk to them about that. And that issue's come up. Well, you know, I know that when you see a big rain, a big come, and everybody runs to get their pump, so we're gonna check on that to see if we can get that in place. And the questions that Commissioner Legay asked, you know, was asked of us, too. We really hadn't had a standard operating procedure and a policy outlining how we react to these issues. That's what we're in the process of doing. That's, this is a piece of it, and we'll bring some others back to the board, so that when y'all are asked, you know, we're all on the same page of, here's the procedure, and y'all can pass that information along as well. But we will, we will certainly check on that.
Did y'all, did y'all ever explore the PTO pumps?
Women may have. I'm not aware. These are not PTO pumps. They're decent pumps.
Those PTO pumps pump a lot of water. Okay. They use them for irrigation. So we got the tractors and the equipment to pump, use the pumps. The pumps would be the minimal cost, because I think the motors would be the most expensive thing on a pump.
That's a good point.
And the tractors, the tractors, we keep running daily, you know.
Anybody be attending that meeting with DEP from the county?
Yes, ma'am. We can have somebody there.
Imagine Billy might.
Maybe Billy McKee, if that would, if that's.
Billy here?
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to volunteer Billy.
Any other, any other questions?
Thanks, okay.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. Would you, I know you talk to Ryan daily. Would you give him our congratulations on the birth of his third son?
Yeah, I talked to him today. Their mother and baby, both are doing well, so.
That's great. Three boys.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones? And as, as Buddy's leaving, just tip of the hat to Public Works and all they've done, their big red fish over the last couple of weeks.
They have worked hard.
Jumping through hoops to, to get this thing back open, so, thank you, y'all. Um, next item, Mr. Chairman, is, we're asking that you approve a resolution requesting to sublease five acres of land from the state of Florida, Department of Transport, Transportation, which is currently leased between the Florida DOT and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to relocate the United Fire Station that's gonna be impacted by the widening of three thirty-one. Uh, the reason this is a sublease instead of a purchase or a request of donation is the state, DOT doesn't own it, the, the DEP, um, has a, is the DEP on it, or they have a lease on?
A lease, they have it.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, so we'll be kind of the, a sublease of a sublease, but, uh, the DOT is fair, fairly comfortable that we can pull that off for five acres to, to replace the property at Woodlawn at the United Fire Station, for us to relocate that station.
Mr. Jones, I've got a question. Did we not just pass a resolution that talked about trying to get them to work with Healthmark, and did not Healthmark indicate that this station was one of the ones they were trying to keep from being impacted?
If, and then, they may have said that, if you didn't, I didn't hear, but...
I didn't hear that either, but that was the question I was gonna ask.
But it's not, it's all in the general area, so...
Well, here, where they're, they, they were going with their thing for west versus east, the, the impacted ones, as it stands right now, are EMS station, Martin's well drilling in Healthmark, versus they wanna put it on the west, so if, if that station wouldn't be impacted...
Then we wouldn't, then there would be no need to move forward with this, and I'm sure the state would say to us, if we're not gonna take your station, we're not gonna lease you this land.
Okay, so this is our fallback position, let's go ahead and do this?
Right.
Because don't you remember when we were negotiating for, um, uh, the bridge and that sort of thing, that, um, the Secretary of DOT, you know, first, he said he would, you know, give us the property, and then, and then he found out, because he didn't know that they actually leased the property. So, um, this is the next best thing to them giving us the property, is us leasing a lease.
Okay, but it would be in lieu of the fact that they don't relocate to the west side.
Yeah.
That's your motion?
Yeah. Well, I think we should need, go ahead and...
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, we've, uh, staff liked the board to approve for us to hold our second, uh, public workshop for, to discuss the, um, sports complex for South Walton on the twenty-sixth of September, uh, which is a Thursday, at, at five o'clock here in this, in this room. At that meeting, we intend to invite those that, uh, may have properties that they would like us to consider, to do short presentations, and we'll also make some presentation of our findings on cost for developing the facilities that were identified in our first meeting.
Um, Larry, are y'all gonna put out some criteria for the property, like it's gotta be a certain size, and it's...
Well, yes.
Okay.
Uh, we're, you know, well, to a degree, if we wanna do, we know we need about twenty-five acres to do, uh, the conceptuals that we've looked at, you know, we can certainly do a skate park on a smaller parcel, but we're gonna look for twenty-five acre parcels or greater.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm envisioning all these people coming, going, yeah, I've got a lot I need to, you know, get rid of.
Yes.
Okay. The skate park, uh, the Helen McCall has actually in it designed a small skate park. We've never built it, because it was, it was not on the top priority list, but FYI.
Okay.
So, mo, we need a motion, yes?
Yeah. You move?
I, I moved, on the twenty-sixth.
You second?
Yeah, sure.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, the school board is, uh, currently assembling a site, site selection committee, um, by, in a local agreement, uh, they have to invite someone from county staff to serve on that committee, and this is for South Walton. They've requested that Matt Carpenter, uh, represent the county on that, uh, site selection committee for the school board.
Any questions?
I think that is a wonderful choice, I will, I will make that motion.
What about it, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Second?
You second? Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, um, we have a request from the Sandestin Owners Association to withdraw their development application for the, uh, office complex to serve the SOA. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to hear, uh, that, um, for quasi-judicial hearing for that development. Our first request is that you vote to cancel that meeting. So moved.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The second motion would be, our land development coach states that once a, that notice have been sent out to notify individuals of a public meeting or hearing for a development, the body that's doing that hearing must accept the request from the developer to withdraw their application. So in order for Sandestin to withdraw the application, uh, this board must give its approval. So, staff requests that you move to allow them, um, permission to withdraw that application. So moved.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So, based on those two motions, we, we will not have a meeting tomorrow to hear, to continue the Sandestin, uh, development or application, and it will, it has, will, it has been withdrawn, and if they want to move forward, they have to, will have to reapply. Okay. Uh, last item, Mr. Chairman, is the resolution that we spoke of earlier, that if you give us approval for the chairman to sign, we'll prepare it, that will support an initiative for the state to provide, uh, funding for counties to initially fund the consulting services for their restore efforts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Freeport Fire Department, excuse me, let's get right over that one. Um, you have in your agenda packet, I believe...
Yeah, we do some.
Well, I don't see it.
I shall show you.
See it in share with me.
I shall show you.
You have it? Let me, let me share with you what it looks like. We met with, uh, Mr. Davis and I met with counsel from Freeport and, uh, Ms. McLean from the city council, to discuss the, um, county operating, the Freeport Fire Department. The discussion led to a number of things, and what we're asking tonight is, uh, your, um, tentative approval of a concept that would allow the city of Freeport to take action on it?
I'm not talking to you, I'm telling that David, you're quite remarkable.
So, um, the points are, based on your earlier, um, proposal to the, to the city, there was, the county agreed to provide funding at a particular level, and I'm not, not sure what that level is, but for the first quarter of the next fiscal year, uh, that we would assume responsibility for the operations and management of the fire department on, uh, January one of two thousand and fourteen. The city will retain ownership of all real property and will lease it to the county for one dollar per year. Uh, the city will convey all the personal property, including the vehicles, to the county via title, when that would be appropriate for vehicles. The county will have the full rights to utilize all available equipment to provide fire protection to the city of Freeport. All vehicles will, will revert back to the city, uh, the city's ownership, when taken out of service by the county. So, we wear them out, uh, then the city can have it back for whatever residual value is there. All current, uh, Freeport Fire Department employees, which meet Walton County's hiring requirements, will be hired by the county in, in their capacity as a firefighter. Those employees deficient in training or certifications will be provided an opportunity to obtain such at the expense of Walton County. And the final point is, the city of Freeport will consent by ordinance to be included in the MSPU for fire service protection. So I think we captured the essence of everything we were looking for, and that, um, uh, we support them through the final quarter of fiscal year, we assume the operations January first, we don't have any capital outlay for buildings or equipment. Uh, we'll bring their employees on that meet our requirements, uh, provide whatever training they need, and the city will agree to move forward, uh, by ordinance to, uh, allow us to collect the MSPU. So if, if the board is, if, if, if we're prepared for the city to take that to the city council for adoption, we just need a tentative approval for those, and we'll provide it to the city and ask them, uh, to take action. Mr. Jones? Yes, sir. Wouldn't there's also some provisions about the property there, that it would be on lease purcha, not lease purchase, but lease, is that, does it show one dollar per year? Dollar per year, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
You don't need a motion.
Well, I'd like a motion, just potentially approve us submitting it to the city for their consideration.
I'll cert, second, and, and, um, Councilwoman McLean is here tonight, and I want to thank her for her effort, she's really worked hard on this, really worked hard, so...
We have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. So, we will provide that to the city of Freeport and ask them to take action, and, uh, if they approve it, they bring back to this board for your final approval.
Oh, you're up, right now.
Yes, sir. Um, we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is a request to approve the conditional release, uh, for Hemby Drake versus Walton County. Um, and I think what we're asking the commission to do is just give, uh, Greg Stewart authority to sign the conditional release on behalf of the county.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And the second item on our agenda is, uh, that the county votes to approve the employment agreement with Mr. Larry Jones.
Any questions?
What was his name again?
Mr. Jones.
Hey, be on the list. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, we have motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And, and we'll have the contract tomorrow to be signed.
Okay. Mr. Bagby's not here, I take it?
He is, on his way to the governor's room.
Okay.
The record holder, director of the TDC, uh, director of sales. Um, we have three items on the agenda. The first is request approval to purchase eleven, a seven by eleven portable changeable message sign to be used for beach safety, visitor safety, and information sharing. The cost of that board is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
Any questions?
Just, where's it going to be placed? If it's just one sign, where's it...
Different areas. It could be placed, uh, across ninety-eight on the south side of the road to give visitors at that intersection a message. It could be at events, different things.
Very good, okay.
Now, she took...
Second.
Now, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The second item is to request approval of the acknowledgement from Southwest Airlines terminating the current agreement. Based on our mutual agreement, our destination marketing agreement, which was originally dated November eighteenth, two thousand nine, and amended on October ninth, twenty twelve, will terminate one year early on September thirtieth, twenty thirteen, and it will conclude as our current media campaign wraps up.
Any questions?
At the conclusion of that... At the conclusion of that, does that half cent go away?
It does sunset in September thirtieth of twenty fourteen, but, uh, we'll be taking something to the TDC board on October first, and we'll have something for you later in October.
Good, thank you.
I think there's some options being, you know, kicked out, you know, to do away with it, and then on something else, you know, that kind of thing.
Have a motion. You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The third item is to request approval to purchase a replacement air conditioning unit at the TDC building for a cost of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, and that is on the north wing of the building.
It's winter time, wait, no, I'm kidding.
It's an old air, uh, AC unit, sixteen years old.
Probably the original one that went in there.
Yes, it is.
Motion to approve.
It's never winter time.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I do have a couple updates. Um, July bed tax collection was up ten point nine seven, and year-to-date was up nine point seven four. Uh, we will be having four committees at the TDC, the Destination Improvements, Beach Management, Marketing and Media, and Events, Activities, Arts and Culture. Uh, so far, we've received a hundred hits on our partner site for interest in that, and to date, we've received thirty-nine applications for those committees. A deadline to submit an application is Friday, September thirteenth at four thirty. So if anybody's interested, we will take their application.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yes, uh, just one thing, and, uh, you know, we have, we've, uh, we've gotten a, uh...
DEP grant to, um, build a pedestrian bike path bridge over Western Lake. Um, it would take the place of, you know, where the traffic and the bikes converge, um, very closely, and it's been on the drawing board, I guess, for a couple of years. Um, I talked to Kelly Horton, and she said that, um, DEP had agreed that they would go ahead and release the funds, so we could start permitting on it, because the permitting, according to Cliff, is gonna, Cliff Nauer is gonna take almost a year. So, we would like to, um, we'd like to go ahead and proceed and get, um, um, as, as far as the engineers, I know Cliff has done a lot of work on it, I don't know how that fits in with the consulting engineers, uh, continuing services thing, but I do know that they've done a lot of work on it, so, and, you know, we could ask Cliff to just proceed, go ahead and start getting the permitting, and that's what I'm asking tonight, is that, um, y'all vote to approve us moving ahead with the permitting, and probably using Preble Resh, because they've been, um, they've done a lot of work on it.
That's your motion? Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yeah.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Commander?
I don't have anything other than, I see one of the best directors we ever had out in the audience, Ken Little, want to welcome him to our meeting.
Mr. Enfield?
Nothing.
Commissioner Chapman?
Nothing.
Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to the planning development services.
Do we have to wait to five?
We have to wait.
We have to wait to five? We don't?
We don't have to wait.
We have to wait to five.
Uh, I think, yeah, we think we have to.
We have to wait to five.
We have to wait.
Yeah.
Did we have to wait?
No, we, we have to wait to five.
Yes, the meetings are, the meetings are advertised for five o'clock.
Yeah.
You're not out.
Schedule.
Sorry.
Killing time, just killing time.
Don't you just want to go eat, Ken?
Go home.
I'll tell you one, do the week.
I'll go home.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have several items on the agenda tonight, I believe they're all QJ items, so, I believe, Sydney, we need to be sworn in.
Uh, yes, at this time, I would swear in all witnesses who expect to testify on any quasi-judicial items before the board. So if you expect to testify, you'll stand up and raise your right hand. Uh, do all of you swear or affirm that your testimony before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, I'd ask all the commissioners if any of you have any ha, um, had any expert communications about any of the items before the board tonight?
No.
Okay. Um, and is there any objection to the notice as published? Okay, I think we can go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have, the first item is, we have several tabling and continuances. If I could go through those, Commissioner first, and go one by one. Just to let you know also, these tablings, they're all Platts. We are gonna institute a policy starting tonight, that if we don't have the Mylar's in our hands with all the required signatures, we're not gonna schedule them for a public hearing. So, I think we can rectify some of these tablings and continuances and not waste our time with this, but so from now on, we won't schedule the public hearings until we have the Mylar's and all the required signatures in our hands.
Wayne, could you share with them what we're also gonna do with the planning commission meetings and separating?
Sure, be glad, Mr. Jones. Also, before, we had been scheduling the planning commission meetings and the board meetings all at one time for the applicants. That led to some issues because it may have been continued at DRB or at the planning commission. Our new policy is, is that we will not schedule the public hearing for the board meeting until after the planning commission meeting, and I think that will alleviate any need for tabling based on another commission or body tabling theirs. And also, I think I believe it'll give you a chance to look at the minutes from the planning commission to get an idea of what the discussions were at the planning commission, some items that were brought up there. So, I think it's twofold. One would be to keep us on track, I won't say there won't be, will never be any continuing because there are always things come up, that's come up between planning commission and the board meeting, but continuances and tabling that are due to other bodies tabling the items will not occur anymore, and then also, of course, getting you more information from that planning commission meeting so you can read and look at those. So, I think that'll be a good move, and it'll give you more information and also expedite our meetings, so we are looking at items that are ready to be heard.
Wayne, I just have one question to ask you at the meeting, when you say you're gonna provide us with...when you say you're gonna provide us with minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there's several different types of minutes, like it's the one that the clerk takes, which is not verbatim. Is that the kind you'll be?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be very, very similar to what the clerk does. They'll be the draft minutes, because I doubt we'll have them approved before you get them, it'll be a dra...we'll have draft on them, and it'll be the draft minutes that we produce from our staff.
At least we will have an opportunity to see perhaps some of the questions that were asked at the planning.
Yes, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to the agenda, Mr. Chairman, number two is Winter Garden at Watersound Phase Three Platte, we're requesting that to be tabled. Again, we don't have the Mylar's in our hands and the required signatures, that's not been brought to us.
Being tabled or moved to a day certain?
Tabled.
Motion to table Winter Garden at Watersound Phase Three Platte?
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, number three is Winter Garden at Watersound Phase Four Platte, we're requesting that to be tabled.
Motion to table.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And again, these are all at the request of the applicants, because they don't have them ready. Number four is Sunset at Inlet Beach, they have a request applicant to continue until the September twenty-fourth meeting.
I make a motion that we continue Sunset at Inlet Beach, Rosemary East until our September twenty-fourth meeting?
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that means at nine AM in the Funyac Springs, just for the record, it's the time and location. Number five is Waterview Inlet Beach, Phase One Platte, request a table.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Number six is a request to tape, to continue until the September twenty-fourth meeting at nine AM in the Funyac Springs at the request of the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, is number eight, Old Seagrove Beach, request a table.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us back to number one on the agenda to be heard tonight, and it's the amendment number two to the Walton County Industrial Park PUD. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to give a brief presentation on the request to amend the PUD.
Good evening, Commissioners, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. This is a request to approve amendment number two to the Walton County Industrial Park PUD. You have before you both a strike-through underlined version and a clean version with these changes accepted that show all the changes. Primarily, the change that's being requested today is to essentially remove the development standards that are contained within this document and substitute those with the development standards that are contained within the covenants and restrictions for this PUD. The reason, again, for this request is to expedite development and allow the county commission who owns this particular park to make rapid changes in response to emerging market opportunities for that particular park. We did also make some updates to various pieces of information in here. The water section and the sewer section have been updated to reflect that we now have a ten-inch water main running through the park, and that we also provide sewer service for all of our prospective park tenants or purchasers. Now, we also updated the address and agent to our county administrator, Mr. Larry Jones, and his office at Adman in the Funyac Springs.
That it, Matt?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Leave it to them. Public comments? Anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, I own property out here.
State your name for the record, sir.
My name's Ben Allen.
Allen?
Allen, L-L-A-N, and I own property out here joining this, and I have this letter that I'm stating that, and I was supposed to be here at five o'clock to go over this, and I...what I'm understanding is they're wanting to put a big rock yard in there. And we've got enough with a railroad right out in front of the house and the interstate behind without having a big rock quarry right next door. And today, I seen your county engineer out there, and I asked him, he was studying the feasibility of putting a road right in front of my house to go down to this rock quarry. Now, we need a break. I talked with Mr. Jones several years ago when he was county commissioner, and he assured me, of course, he don't remember, I'm sure, that this don't ever happen, and I also talked to Randy Legafeld a few weeks ago, when I got this, the reason I didn't go to the regional meeting, and he told me that, no, there's no way they can do that, but it seems like that's what's going to take place.
I think it's, we don't really know what's going to take place out there yet, sir. Yes.
You're talking about, he's talking about mining operations.
Yeah, and tonight's item is purely about the PUD itself and the documents, we're not talking about any particular uses at all. What we're saying is we're mending the PUD and the development center in the PUD, we're not talking about any particular use out there at all, and so just, you know, I'm not sure where the rock quarry discussion came from, but I know tonight's item is purely based off of just the PUD itself. Any future uses will be, I guess, at that time, taken up at that time.
Yes.
You know, I can only speak for one myself, but I cannot imagine, we're talking about a dirt pit. We're, no, it's something different. What's a rock? Yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna be mining, if anything goes out there. We don't even know.
We're even having a proposal presented.
No, we have.
I can never...
Quarry operation is very loud, I don't think, it might be simple for a quarry location. First of all, you gotta have the rock and so forth. But again, just reminding the board, Mr. Allen, this is just the PUD document, we're not talking about it all. If there was a new use, I'm not aware of that, but this is purely based off of just the development center that's contained in the PUD. We don't discuss any particular uses at all in this amendment just before you tonight, purely talking about the development center and mending it currently.
Are there any of the roads, are there any roads going in that would go by and stuff?
It's mostly head Main Street, it runs right down the side of my property and cuts down next to my property. It circles about half of my property on two sides that I own, and we have enough traffic on that road it is, they can't even keep the holes filled in, and we can't get a grader out there, and when it rains, it washes out and blows out my fields, and I went over that with engineer out today. I mean, it's a shame that the road's in that shape, but I mean, we can't handle any more traffic on it.
Until we hear, we've got an offer of ending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sir.
Right now, the only thing that's before the board is the PUD amendments and...
I don't know why I got this letter, Washington.
I don't know what letter you got.
I don't know.
Why'd you get a letter from him?
I talked with a gentleman today, and he said be here at five o'clock, cause they were discussing it.
Yes, ma'am, the letter he has is part of our requirements and our public notes about the PUD amendment, that's for any kind of amendment we do or an applicant does, it's just a typical standard notice saying, this is gonna be heard tonight, the PUD amendment will be heard tonight, that's what it is.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, and if you look at, if you look at part of the, you know, part of this package, I think it's in the tenet of the office apartment, and it says that it's clean, attractive business, it's a fit accounting character.
Yeah.
And it says manufacturing, distribution, office research, development, so I don't know if the law, even if there was a rock quarry out there, I don't know that it would fit into the character of what this...
Well, I haven't received anything on what they was gonna put out, I was just understanding of what was taking place.
Nobody...
No, there's nothing, what?
I just, I can't, there again, speak for myself, that certainly is not in character with what I think I perceive the park to be, and, I mean, we only have one tenant that even wants to go out there right now, possibly two, and that's Love's Truck Stop, so...
I understand.
I don't know where that information come from, that's the first time I've heard it, you know.
I mean, I know we've had inquiries from numerous companies that have talked about coming in there. As Commissioner Commander said, the only one that's made an offer even to the board was Love's, which we accepted, and they're going in at the two eighty-five entrance.
I'm taking the death of that, I don't have a problem with them coming in over, and that's what I understood they was gonna be doing all along, was coming in from two eighty-five.
Right.
I'm not aware of any offer in front of the board for anything else.
But here, about two weeks ago, they was clearing the land right up across the road from my property, they cleared the land all the way up to the road, like they was cutting it right away, and they worked all night, we had it all night long, and running trucks thinning it out all night.
Was that the tree thinning?
It might have been the...
Might have been the harvest.
Did work all night.
Excuse me?
We had some tree harvesting done out there.
Yeah, they run all night.
Why you do that all night?
I apologize that they disturbed your sleep during the night.
Well, it does kinda, especially when the road, everything's beat up the way it is on that road, and I mean, the road won't handle the traffic that way, and I mean, it really won't, and I mean, I know they got a problem with that road out there, and we got traffic, but as long as they coming in on, I don't have a problem, they coming in on two eighty-five, just as long as they don't put another road in. Of course, the engineer said there was no way they could turn eighteen-wheeler, didn't have them turn sixty-one foot eighteen-wheeler.
Well, Mr. Chairman, any project that comes before the board, for there, certainly the public will have the opportunity to speak at that time about...
Then I would receive another notice if they was gonna do something like this.
There'll be a notice if there's a public hearing.
Yeah, and I know the road you're talking about, cause I've tried to address it recently,